We don't have livestream available tonight and we call the July 13, 2021 regular meeting to order with all board members present in person or via Zoom webinar. And I'd just like to thank everybody who's here in person. This is our first in-person meeting since March of last year, since that guy was running the meeting. And so we're doing a, we're back to in-person and at the same time, we've got people coming in via Zoom. So bear with us. This is, we're trying to make things work for the first time tonight. So, oh, and we ask that all in-person participants mute all of your devices and turn off your speakers to prevent echoes and feedback. Great. And by the way, for people who are here in person, if you want to sign up to speak on an agenda item, we have iPads that are available in the lobby. So as long as you sign up to speak before we start discussion on the item, then we'll allow you to speak. So if you're here to speak on an item and you haven't signed up yet, please do it at the iPads that are available in the lobby. Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Can we get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Subapproved.
So moved by trustee Viser. We have a second.
Second, McQuary.
Second by Vice President Whitehurst Payne. So we're going to do the same thing that we've been doing. We'll call on each board member individually, but you can also press your button if you, I know Sabrina's been looking forward to pressing your button. Okay, so trustee Viser.
Aye.
Trustee McQuary.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo. Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. Okay. Okay. Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public. While the California Department of Public Health and County of San Diego directives prohibiting large public gatherings during the coronavirus outbreak are being relaxed, the Board of Education is accepting public testimony in person and via Zoom webinar for the July 13, 2021 meeting. Our Board Bylaw 1025 sets the time for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. The list of public speakers is attached to item B2. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, you will be allowed to speak. Please come to the podium or unmute yourself at that time. If you hear your name called and are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Once all speakers have been called for the item, your name will be called again. Please unmute yourself. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. If you signed up for a courtesy text reminder, staff will make every attempt to send it to the phone number you have provided in advance of the item being discussed. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. Okay, we don't have a student presentation tonight and we'll start with item D1 by asking our General Counsel, Andre Green, to report out on reportable actions from today's closed session.
Thank you, President Barrera. We have a single item to report out in closed session today. That is, the Board approved a settlement 5.0 in the matter, the OAH matter, number 20210408.
Thank you, General Counsel Green. Okay, Superintendent Jackson, do we have administrative assignments to report out?
Thank you, President Barrera. Yes, we have a few. Thank you. Very excited for the UC community. I know it's been a crazy end of the year and with great loss. We are proud to announce principal for UC High School will be one of your own returning home, Michael Paredes. Congratulations, Michael. Second, we'd like to congratulate the principal of Lewis Middle School and welcome to the community, Justin Phillips. Vice Principal at Taft Middle School, we want to welcome from Georgia, John Iverson, Vice Principal at Taft Middle School. And Choyus Mead, Vice Principal, proud to announce, and she'll be staying home, Kimberly Zarkowski. Congratulations to you, Kimberly. And finally, we have a program manager for program monitoring, who is currently the interim, and this will be a permanent position. We are appointing Dario Gutierrez. Those are it for now.
Thank you, Superintendent Jackson. Okay, we'll move to item D4, which is Superintendent Jackson's information report.
Thank you, President Barrera. Tonight's superintendent's report is brief. I have two items to cover. One, that has been heavy on the minds of our entire school district and our school community, the recent release of the CDPH guidelines. And most importantly, the mask wearing. We will be returning to full instruction in the fall and we'll talk about the virtual academy opportunity in the upcoming report. But with students returning to school following the CDPH guidelines, all students will be required to wear masks. This will be all of our students returning to in-person learning indoors, they will be required to wear masks, and that is a requirement of the CDPH. And that's what we will be following. The second piece that I want to mention is new legislation on AB 104. And this is a bill led by Lorena Gonzalez, which provides access for parents to request retention for their students based on any concerns they had coming out of the most recent pandemic and the latest school year. The second piece of this, it does provide opportunities for secondary students and their parents to request pass, no pass versus their academic grades. This is something that we will continue to follow and work through as there are still some guidelines that remain out of the UC system and some of our private universities. So we'll be watching that and we will have more guidance on that in the upcoming future. So those are my report items this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. Okay, Board information reports. We'll start with trustee Viser.
Good evening. I have a video for tonight, so if we could play that video, please? Thank you. Hello, my name is Kevin Viser and I'm the Board of Education trustee for District B for Viser. Earlier this month, I had the honor of walking through the construction site for Mission Valley's first elementary school located at the corner of Villa Alta and Sevita Boulevard. The new school will serve families in Mission Valley and Fashion Valley neighborhoods when it's completed in the fall of 2022. Without further ado, here's a virtual walkthrough of the future campus. Thank you for watching our virtual walkthrough. I'd like to thank Lee Dogroff, CW Driver, Sudbury, and all the project team, especially the taxpayers for approving the bond, bringing this project to fruition. I'd also like to thank the Grant family, which owned the former quarry site since the early 1900s. They worked with us to develop the project and worked with our project team. We can't wait to celebrate the completion of this historic elementary school.
All right, thank you, trustee Viser. That's so exciting to see this new school coming to fruition. Okay, trustee McQuary, do you have a report tonight?
Yeah, thank you very much. So thank you, trustee Viser, for sharing that video. District B is adjacent to District C, which is C for coastal, which is my area. And we share the Kearney cluster and excited to see the new school that's being developed there. I also want to commend the staff and school leadership and support staff for the summer Level Up experience and the preparations that are underway for the fall opening.
Thank you, trustee McQuary. Trustee Bazo.
So I had the opportunity to share a video at our last board meeting and I had quite a long board report with all the graduations. I was excited to be the newest board member to be able to be in person with the graduates. So since I had such a long board report last time, I'm going to give back some of that time this evening to other board members.
All right. Thanks, trustee Bazo. But you earned it with four graduation ceremonies in one day. That's right, a record. That's great. Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
I want to thank you for this opportunity and I want to say that I think every week I've reported on Lincoln High School, so you will know tonight, no report on Lincoln High School since it's all of our school. But I do want to say that I did get a chance to go out to several of the schools that are in summer school right now and the video will just, I mean, the film, the tape will just roll as I'm talking. As I went to the schools, one of the things that came up, and I realized that because I've not been on campus a lot this year, security came up. And I've talked to superintendent and staff about it. Oak Park noted that they had to move their latch up high because folks were just coming in anyway. And they're in the process of getting a buzzer so that they can enter school. Euclid had some major issues going on. They've had to call not only San Diego, thank you for our police department, but also San Diego PD has had to respond to the homeless issues around that school in the last couple of weeks. So hopefully, we can put that on our radar that they are having issues. They have a CDC that's been unoccupied for a couple of years and I know that they have plans, according to Lee Dogroff, to expand and do some things with that. But in the meantime, because it's something vacant, it attracts, it's a magnet to homeless folks and while we know that the city has that issue, we do not want that issue around our schools. So thanks to both San Diego PD and our police department for at least monitoring that for the school and so that they don't have to take time to do that. Myra Clock visited that school site and their problem is a little bit different because when it's locked down, the students have found a way to get in by sticking their hand in through the fence. And you'll see that in the video, I mean, in the pictures. So I demonstrated that by sticking my arm in. They just stick their arm in and open it. So they've had to put some metal plates around that area so that they can't open it and get on campus and skate and all of that during off times and do some other things.
At least they're trying to get into school.
They're breaking into school on the weekends and out to school. Yes, and I recognize that that's why we did the joint parks, because we need something for our students to do after hours. And I think superintendent had some great ideas on that that we'll be working on. And just wanted to note that I did visit Wolfson, yeah, and saw their program and it's documented there. It's a wonderful program, a wonderful campus, really excited about that one. And then I ended with a clip of our former board member, trustee Dr. John Lee Evans, who happens to be here today at the African American Museum where they were recognizing some things and you've probably seen that event on the news at the children's museum. So thank you for this opportunity. Hopefully, I didn't go over two minutes.
Thank you, Vice President.
Thank you.
And I just want to briefly, in addition to tonight having our first ever hybrid meeting where we've got people in person and on Zoom at the same time, we're also piloting something tonight that seems simple, but you know, I think a really important idea, and that is for people who are calling in or signed up to speak over Zoom, we ask them if they wanted a text notification shortly before their item comes up. Our meetings can, you know, often go a long time and if somebody signs up to speak on a certain item, we don't want him to, first of all, have to wait through various items and then we don't want them to miss their time when they're called. And so we're going to be, if folks gave us their cell phone number where we can send a text, we'll be sending a text notification shortly before the item comes up. And it's something that, you know, I think we all as board members appreciate because we want to make sure that we are able to get the input from everybody who wants to speak. But the idea really came to us from a coalition of community-based organizations led by the National Coalition for People's Advocates for Justice. And the Reverend Shane Harris, you know, really has been our key partner in promoting this idea. And I don't know if Shane is available now, but if Shane is available, we'd love to have him say a few words.
I don't see him on the speaker.
We don't see him on the speaker, okay. But again, we'd like to, you know, just extend our thanks to Shane and the Community Coalition for bringing this idea forward to us tonight. Okay, we will now move on to items. We're going to combine items E1 and E2, which is our school reopening update and the establishment of our K-12 online virtual academy. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Barrera. I'd like to invite staff up. I know we have several presenters. Tonight's presentation will be an update on our Level Up program. And we also have been updating during this reopening presentation on the virtual academy. And so at the end of the reopening, you'll see a couple of slides on the virtual academy where we will be asking the board's approval of the structure for the virtual academy. I know Tavka Bustani, our Chief of Leadership and Learning, and Nicole DeWitt, Instructional Support Officer, will be joining me to present here. As Nicole completes her presentation on the virtual academy, E2, we're going to be asking for the board to approve this structure. And then following that, if we do get approval, then I will have another announcement. So I'd like to turn it over to our Chief of Leadership and Learning, Tavka Bustani. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, interim Superintendent Dr. Jackson, Board President Barrera, and Board Trustees. It's an honor to be here this evening. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll see the information that my colleague Nicole DeWitt and I will be presenting as part of our ongoing updates to keep our San Diego Unified Community apprised of our progress around Level Up San Diego and the virtual academy. I will hand it over to Nicole, who will be providing an update on Level Up San Diego enrollment, student learning, and enrichment opportunities.
Next slide, please. So here you'll see the number of students currently participating in our morning academic program. As of July 1st, we had over 10,000 students enrolled in the elementary program, more than 2,500 students in the middle school program, and over 9,600 in the high school program, giving us a grand total of over 23,000 students participating in morning academics. This is a huge increase from the 2,500 students we typically serve in a more traditional credit recovery summer school year. In addition, we also have 10,947 students enrolled in afternoon enrichment activities, with many of those students attending both morning academics and afternoon enrichment. Next slide, please. Our summer academic program has given students the opportunity to focus on project-based learning and explore concepts in a hands-on environment. Here you'll see our youngest students still engaging in curriculum via district-issued Chromebooks, as well as using physical supplies to enhance their learning. We were also able to partner with Clear Blue Sea and coordinated in-person field trips for our middle school students to support their project-based learning as it relates to the effects of pollution on our oceans. Next slide, please. This next video, which we'll play for you in just a moment, highlights some of the enrichment activities that students have participated in across our city. This is such a great opportunity for kids to come back from the pandemic and get a chance to be around other students and doing arts and music and theater and coming back from the pandemic strong. I'm a music teacher at Wilson Middle School and I'm the director of Summer Sites and Sounds, our summer camp at Wilson Middle School. They can choose an art class outside of their arts major, so art students can get a chance to study an instrument. Instrumental students can study arts, things like that. And then two days a week, we also are doing fun camp activities like arts and crafts and playing sports and doing silly games and karaoke and fun things like that. One of the big things I'm seeing is smiles, lots of smiling eyes. Kids are happy. Kids are making friends on the very first day, rushing out to the car to tell their parents how much fun they had. Thanks so much to Level Up for providing these opportunities for kids this summer. It's been a lot of fun. I would now like to turn it back over to Tavka to speak about the Leader in Me program that was part of our summer academic program and also offered online workshops for educators and families.
Thank you, Nicole. The San Diego Unified, in collaboration with Franklin Covey's Leader in Me, launched the Find Your Voice Summer Leadership Institutes for our students, families, teachers, and administrators. The objective of our program is to build connections with staff, connections with communities and others through social, emotional learning and a mentorship program. This summer, 57 elementary schools and educators were trained and implemented the Seven Habits of Healthy Kids, and 16 middle schools and educators were trained and implemented in the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teams. 200 high school students will participate in mentorship and leadership development training. These 200 students will help design high school summer bridging opportunities and programs at their prospective high schools in order to support and mentor incoming ninth-grade students. We currently have 243 families in the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Families webinar in the next two weeks and would have served over 500 families. Our goal is to empower families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders to share the experience of their students and learn how the seven habits can be applied at home. Next slide, please. In addition, 132 leaders across the district voluntarily participated in the summer Leader in Me leadership series focused on the following four topics: four roles of great leaders, four disciplines of execution, speed of trust, and the power of social, emotional learning. Next slide, please. 50 schools within the district will continue in the Leader in Me program throughout the 21-2022 school year. 35 elementary schools, five middle schools, and 10 high schools. Selected schools will also be included in the 21-22 school year program, including Boone, Carver, Encanto, Fay, Johnson, Ibarra, Crawford, Hoover, and Morse. I'll hand it over to Nicole.
Thank you, Tavka. Next slide, please. In our next board item, we are asking the board to take action on approving the virtual academy as an online magnet school that expands our current IHI program to serve grades K through 12 and uses the existing independent study attendance-taking procedures to document student participation and work completion. Next slide, please. We are excited to announce the launch of our virtual academy instructional program, which will include a 360-minute school day with a thoughtful balance of both live and asynchronous instruction. For elementary students, one-third of the minutes will be dedicated to live whole group instruction, one-third to live small group instruction, and one-third to independent practice. Secondary students in grades 6 through 12 will be on a quarter system and will take three classes per quarter. Each class will be approximately 90 minutes in length with an additional 90 minutes of asynchronous learning that takes place outside of the designated class periods. Currently, we have 1,300 families who expressed interest via the parent survey in enrolling their students in the virtual academy. For families who are unable to complete the survey but would still like to enroll their children, they can email virtualacademy@sandy.net with their child-student ID number, name, and current school. Virtual Academy staff will be reaching out later this month to complete the enrollment and class selection process. I will now hand it back over to Tavka.
Thank you. As always, we close our board updates with the faces of our amazing students in San Diego Unified. Tonight, we share this image of Stephen Viostrone, who is currently enrolled at Cherokee Point's dual-language program, learning Spanish, and will be in kindergarten for the following school year. Stephen is currently in a kindergarten class with an amazing kinder teacher in Normal Heights, Elsa Leon. Ms. Leon states that Stephen has demonstrated tremendous academic improvement in kindergarten, making gains in reading, writing, and mathematics. Stephen thoroughly enjoys school and has developed a passion for reading books, as you can see here. The joy for learning and the passion for reading that Stephen has developed is a direct testament to the dedication of our San Diego Unified School District educators, leaders, and families who partner each and every day to ensure the academic success of the students we are proud to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tavka and Nicole, and to everybody that's worked so hard on our summer on our summer program. It was great to see in the Level Up video Paula Richardson, who's our music teacher at Wilson Middle School, a Teacher of the Year. And I know what it's meant to her to be able to inaugurate the new facilities, the Performing Arts Center and the other facilities at Wilson, with a partnership with the Old Globe and the Youth Symphony and everybody else that's been coming in and working with our students. So it's just, we know that this is an experience that our students deserve, that our students need, given what they've been through this last year. And it's an experience that we're committed to not only sustaining going forward, but to expanding and making better. And that's because of your work and your leadership, and we thank you very much for that. We do have one speaker on Item E1 who just received, I understand, your text notification, and that is Sabrina Hanlon. Go ahead, Sabrina.
Good evening, and welcome back. I'm working summer school for the first time ever and enjoying it, learning a lot, and can't wait to share what I've learned with others. The Virtual Academy moving forward is lovely. I love it. I think that we need to have alternatives for everyone, and that includes our employees. And so, I'm hoping that as we are rolling back into the reality of face-on, face-contact and into a building that doesn't have the luxuries of many other buildings in this city and in the district, that we have some compassion and look towards maybe a slower reentry or alternative locations during the heat months. I know you guys all know what I'm talking about when I speak to the heat in the ed center. But I wish you all luck. You guys have a tremendous job ahead of you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Okay, we've got a staff recommendation on the establishment of the K-12 Online Virtual Academy. Could we get a motion?
So moved, McCoury?
I think a motion by Trustee McCoury, and we got a second from Trustee Bazo. Yeah, Board Member Questions and Comments, Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
No, I just want to say that it's just really exciting to see the summer program that we're doing. Most of the schools had around 20 classes. And I'm just so thankful that our students have had the opportunity to participate in these kind of activities, because normally they would not have had this opportunity. So it's been a wonderful experience. Going out, visiting schools, you get to see that.
Thank you, Vice President. I know we've heard from several of our parents who said they've signed their kids up for multiple summer activities that they just wouldn't have been able to afford before. And so, it's a great step forward, I think, for our district. Thank you. Okay, we have a, yes, Trustee Bazo.
And I would just like to add to that, that yes, congratulations to the staff on a fantastic job. And I forgot to mention during my board report that I did go out the first day of the summer programs to all the Miramesa schools that were doing summer programs. We did like a marathon morning. Lamont Superintendent Jackson and I went out, and there were the normal glitches going on, but he jumped right in and was able to fix most of them. Usually involved getting online or getting the right teachers with the right students, finding their classrooms. But I think all of that's been worked out, and I'm just excited to see this come to fruition. And it's wonderful to have for our students, and they were just so excited to be there. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Bazo. Yes, Dr. McCoury.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the staff as well for the Leader in Me program. We've seen it grow and develop throughout the district, and it's exciting to see so many schools participating. It does address so socially, emotional, and mental health issues very, very directly and very comprehensively in a way that prepares students for the bigger world. It helps them better understand who they are, and it provides them with pathways for developing our positive relationships with students around them and in their community. So thank you for highlighting the Leader in Me.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McCoury. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. If we're ready to vote, Trustee Beiser.
Aye.
Trustee McCoury.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. Great, congratulations. Thanks so much for all your work, Nicole and Tavka. Okay, and I think you have an announcement now, Superintendent.
I do. Thank you to all the trustees, and thank you, Nicole and Tavka, for the presentation. We are super excited to have the Virtual Academy as an opportunity for our students. And I am proud to announce the Education Complex Director for the Virtual Academy, and that will be Unique Johnson. Congratulations, and we look forward to your continued work with the Virtual Academy.
Thank you, Superintendent Jackson. Yes. Okay, can we get a motion on Item F1?
So moved?
So moved by Trustee Beiser. Do we have a second? Second by Trustee Bazo. Okay, Trustee McCoury.
Aye.
Trustee Beiser.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. Okay, moving along. So we're ready. Do we have a motion on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda?
So moved?
Seconded.
So moved by Trustee Beiser, seconded by Vice President Whitehurst Payne. Any board comments or questions? If not, Trustee McCoury.
Aye, but I also acknowledge the number of items that deal with our collaboration with our college districts. It's incredible to see the collaboration, and we're a much better community because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McCoury. Trustee Beiser.
Aye.
Trustee Bazo.
Aye.
Vice President Whitehurst Payne.
Aye.
And Barrera, aye. Okay, that brings us to public comment on items not on the agenda. So again, we're going to call you in order of the requests. Some of you are in person, some of you are virtual. You'll have three minutes each, and we'll begin with Charles Cox. Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
Good afternoon. I'm Chuck Cox. I'm a 48-year resident of Tierra Santa. In March 2021, the Board of Education voted on a petition authored by Erica Renfrie, Principal at Sarah, allowing for a name change at Sarah High School. Her narrative indicated overwhelming support from the community for the name Canyon Hills. She supplied data to support her narrative. The problem is, the data does not support her narrative of overwhelming support. I call your attention to three data slides, which I believe you have copies of, submitted by Renfrie, then passed on by staff member Najee to a naming committee where it was accepted as accurate. This first one is an alumni inquiry, 1,243 members. And you can see that some 65% voted either to leave the name the same or to shorten it to Sarah. Canyon Hills was a dismal 16%, not exactly overwhelming. In terms of the mascot change and the color changes, the same survey to alumni showed 42% wanted to leave the name or the mascot, and the color's the same. Rattlesnakes is what eventually was passed. It had a wonderful 19.6% approval. A third survey was unnamed, but it did have 496 respondents. Of those, 57% liked the name the way it was. 43% were willing to talk about it. Where is the overwhelming support? Where is the student vote? It's not in the data. I haven't seen it. I've looked. The point? Data provided by Renfrie did not support her narrative. The petition contained misrepresentations, falsehoods, and biased information. Yes, you bear the responsibility for naming and renaming. But in this case, I think you were misled. Were misleading statements provided to the naming committee? Why was the naming committee, or petition, rather, listed as a recommendation item for the March 9th Board of Education meeting? Then a motion was made, voted on, and passed to rename. I ask you to look more closely at this petition supplied by Renfrie. Investigate the process that was used. Rescind the name change and allow Tierra Santa residents to weigh in. Wise leaders lead, but they listen carefully to their constituents. I've provided the names of over 4,000 people, asking that you rescind your recent approval of renaming Unipero Sarah High School. This number grows daily. Rescind and reopen the issue, allowing Tierra Santa residents to have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Bartel.
Hello, how are you? Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Janet Bartel. I am a 40-year resident of Tierra Santa. Two of our five children attended Sarah High. I thank you for giving us a voice this evening. It has been a long time coming. When I first saw and observed the rumblings of a proposed mascot change and possible name change, it was on the Nextdoor app. I was not impressed and not called to action that any issue of this importance would surely be would be disseminated on a more professional and reliable format, not a Nextdoor app. As the pro and con comments increased, I decided to write a letter directly to Dr. Renfrie expressing my opposition to the idea. I sent copies to the Superintendent Cindy Martin, to the Board of Education, and to Bishop McElroy. The letter was written July 4, 2020, mailed by USPS on July 5, 2020. Only Bishop McElroy acknowledged it. I have copies of my letter. Periodically, I visited the Sarah High website. I had no indication of increased interest. There were no notices on the large electronic billboard that we have in the corner of Tierra Santa Boulevard and Santo Road. There was nothing in the Tierra Times. There was nothing reported to the Tierra Santa Community Council. All attention in the news was focused on new cases of COVID-19. We were urged to avoid crowds. Meetings were canceled. Schools were closed. I truly believe that it was a dead issue, or at least one tabled for the duration of the pandemic. Incredibly, in March, we residents were gobsmacked by the news that Sarah High was now Canyon Hills. Immediately, we sprang into action. I guess we became the woke ones. A small group of five met in my family room in March and has morphed into thousands of residents, as witnessed by Change.org, wet petitions, and people on street corners. We continued our letter-writing campaign. We requested a copy of the packet that Dr. Renfrie submitted to the Board of Education. We circulated it. We viewed the meeting on YouTube of the meeting where the vote was taken. We saw two outside interest groups who were invited to participate in a one-sided, slanted meeting. We were not included, the residents. In June of 2021, we requested to be heard by the Tierra Santa Community Council, and we invited Dr. Renfrie to participate. After much discussion, Dr. Renfrie apologized to the council and said she would not leave out the residents in any future decisions. In essence, she was acknowledging the mistakes were made, but explained that she was doing what the Board of Education and the naming committee told her to do. Joined by thousands of residents in Tierra Santa, I urge you to rescind your recent approval of the name change and restart the process to include Tierra Santa residents. As an addendum, let me add, I remain thankful that you cannot change the name of our city, San Diego. After Saint Didicus of Alcalá, Spain, I am thankful you cannot change the name of Santo, Saint Road. I am thankful you cannot change the name of Mission Trails Regional Park, Unipero Sarah Trail, Sarah Mesa, Mission Valley, to name a few. I shudder to think what schools are next on the chopping block. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Okay, apparently our buzzer is not working, so when we get the aye sign from Ms. Stoltz, we'll remind you that the lights come on. Okay, great. Russell Stye.
I still have a little giddy up in my go here. Superintendent Jackson, President Barrera, Honorable Board Members, good evening. Thank you for letting us come up and speak. It's an important issue to us. You know that. You've seen us here before. My wife and I have been involved with Sarah High School since 1987, when our first of three kids entered Sarah. All of them received a great education in that school system and went on to graduate from universities. My wife, Peggy, and I were very heavily involved with different parts of that school and only wanted the best for our kids and all the attending students. I am one of the first Sarah Foundation Presidents that put a lot of effort into making this school an important part of our community. We wanted it to be a positive experience for every student and every teacher. The Foundation has raised over $1 million and made significant and substantial additions to the campus. We installed football field lighting, campus security lighting, remodeled the counseling office, converted two fenced outside lockers, these areas that were cordoned off that students couldn't even use. We remodeled those. We took them down, and we made spacious lunch courts out of them. We converted the unused bicycle rack area to a large lunch and meeting area with canopies. And like we said, like someone else said, we installed the lighting marquee at a key intersection. All of this, plus giving our scholarship money for various student accomplishments. We also hosted several Student-Athlete Award evenings and many silent and live auctions. So you can see that we put a lot of time, we put our hearts in this thing, our money, our personal time, in making Sarah a school that this community can be proud to call its own. I would think that to change a name that is so ingrained in this community would certainly require a buy-in from all Tierra Santa, and especially those of us that made significant contributions, not just 1% of the community. Even our local paper, the Tierra Times, was not a part of dissemination or notification. That should certainly be part of any process of this magnitude. The Board voted on information that was not factually true. If the facts were known, you would find out that significantly less than 1,000 votes went to renaming the school to Canyon Hills. Can you imagine that any election, including yours, could be decided by 1% of your constituents? I don't think so. I don't think so. I respectfully request the Board to rescind the name change and let all of us have that voice. Additionally, the Tierra Santa Community Council has voted to request the name and mascot change be rescinded and a new and fair process started. I think you know that's the truth. We need to restart this process. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, the next three speakers have signed up virtually. Gary Hag. Oh, Gary's here. Okay, great.
Yes, I'm Gary Hag. I'm a 46-year resident of the Sarah High School community and father of three graduates of Sarah High School. Two were captains in varsity sports. I've recently learned, as you're hearing tonight, the move to change the name of Sarah High School had been in progress for over a year, when I was informed about it less than two months ago. In documents written by Principal Renfrie, we were led to believe all alumni and their parents were notified about this name change. That is not true. Based on the 4,000 signatures on the petitions and the comments to this community group, the vast majority of alumni and parents never received any notification of this name change. Most were unaware this name change was in the works until our community group united... were unaware this name change was in the works until our community group united and began to publicize the underground movement being led by Principal Renfree. We are furious about this intentional act on her part to keep this from the public. We have learned Principal Renfree communicated with her select group of, what she called "community," via blog and emails, not the community at large. In Renfree's report to the Board, this was referred to as "social media and community forums." The general community members would not have known this even existed. Stakeholders did not have an opportunity to voice our opinion before this Board when you voted on this name change on March 29th of this year, because we didn't even know it was in progress on that date. When this came to light on June 16th, 2021, at the Tierra Santa Community Council meeting, Principal Renfree was asked why she did not communicate with the community in a more public manner by using, I'll throw out three, and some of them would mention, Tierra Santa Community Council, she could go before them, she didn't, an article in the community newspaper, Tierra Times, and the school's electronic marquee sign that she controls and is at the busiest intersection of the community, seen by thousands every day. Principal Renfree's response at that Tierra Santa Community Council meeting was that she didn't know how to effectively communicate with the community. This is not a legitimate answer and is, in my eyes, conduct unbecoming of a principal with five years at the school and a resident of the community. There was not extensive media coverage, one local TV news broadcast by 7:39 in August of 2020, prior to the Board vote that I could find, and others. By controlling who knew about this action, she was still not able to control the results of the data, and as Chuck Cox mentioned, the data doesn't support what she wrote in her letter and also Samer Najee. And it appears to me that Mr. Najee and Principal Renfree have misled the naming committee and you, the Board, by the false information in their letters.
Okay.
I am one of thousands, and I ask you to rescind this, just like everybody else, and give us a fair chance at expressing our views and have a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Okay, Denise Barrow. Denise passes. Will Williams? Is Will available on Zoom? No. Okay, Angela Elfman.
Thank you for allowing us to speak about this issue. Our family moved into Tierra Santa 38 years ago, when my husband retired from the Navy and went on to government contract work. Two of our children graduated from Sarah High School, one in 1989 and one in 1990, and went on to college and graduated there. The remaining, the renaming of Sarah High School was a total shock to our family. When we found out this last May that the name change had taken place, we could not understand how we missed the opportunity to vote. We never saw a Tierra Times article or notice. We saw no notice of town halls or anything from the town council. Nothing. No notices on the Sarah marquee on the corner of Santo and whatever that street is. None of my friends knew about this name change. I finally found a couple friends out that knew a couple months earlier than I found out. They were searching for answers as well, and they had required some information, so I reached out for them, to them for help. A friend sent me a copy of the Sarah Names Change Packet. I read through it, and I was astounded at the number of misleading statements and data inconsistencies. One example is a letter from Samer Najee to the naming committee based on Dr. Renfree's proposal, where he says, and I quote, "Of the 1,243 people that took the name, time to complete the survey, the majority voted for changing the name from Huniparo Sarah High School to something else." This statement is very misleading. Najee goes on to say, "Of the alternative names, Canyon Hills received the most votes. But if you look at the pie chart on page 34 of the Name Change Packet, only 16% wanted to change the name to Canyon Hills." How is that a majority when 65% wanted to either keep Huniparo Sarah completely or shorten to the name Sarah? That's a majority. 65% is a majority. I was never great in math, but I think I know the difference between 16.2% being a small amount and 65% being a majority. More evidence of the Name Change Committee is being misled by Najee's letter appears when you come to Ebony Weathers' response with her recommendations to the Board of Education stating, "I recommend the change pursuant with the overwhelming request of the school community?" Huh? And how about Lydia Martinez's recommendation that states, "I support the primary choices"? What was she looking at? I asked the Board of Education to rescind the decision to change the name from Huniparo Sarah to Canyon Hills. Start this process all over again, so we all in Tierra Santa have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mike Rabello. Do we have Mike available online? Nope. No Mike. Okay. Robert Wright.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Robert Wright. I've lived in Tierra Santa for 47 years. All three of my children graduated from Sarah High School. In 1988, the Sarah Foundation started in my backyard with two other people who thought it was a good idea. The purpose of that foundation was to support, and continues to be, to support the academic and athletic activities of the high school. Since the foundation has started, literally thousands of parents and others interested in the community have supported the foundation and its efforts at Sarah High School. I am here tonight to speak for those people and their connection to the high school. There are two core problems with the renaming that I want to bring to your attention. One is that it severs the emotional and goodwill ties between those people who supported the school and the school. Secondly, the renaming of the school will result in the destruction of some of the improvements that the Sarah Foundation has made at the high school. Two quick examples. The Corner Project, which was a co-adventure of about $100,000 from the Sarah Foundation, about $150,000 from the district, and about $20,000 from the city, involves walls that have the Sarah High School name on them that will have to be destroyed as a result of this. In 2010, we did the School Signage Project, which will have to be partially destroyed as a result of the renaming of the school. These thousands of foundation members have not only the association of Huniparo Sarah High School with a missionary, they also associate it with the contributions that they've made to the school and how those contributions have benefited students. And let me just close with a couple of examples very quickly, but you'll get the idea. Our first project in 1989 was to erect stadium lights in the stadium. Those foundation members, including Russ Stye and others who are here tonight, identify with the four-year period during which we paid off the note that we all guaranteed to put the stadium lights into the stadium. Tracking forward, we had several other projects, the Campus Outdoor Lighting Project in 1996, the Corner Project in 2000, the Campus Signage Project in 2010. Those parents who were at the school and were foundation members, and we typically had between 200 and 250 members a year, all identify with those contributions that they made to the school during the time that they were there. And let me just close with an example I think that describes what I'm saying best of all. In 2010, a woman who had worked for four years contributed much, both in time and money, to the Sarah Foundation, said to me, "You know, I don't want to leave Sarah High School without something tangible to show for my efforts." Her wish came true with the signage project, but now, of course, that's in danger of destruction. For that reason, I support the statements that have been previously made about your reconsideration of the naming. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Okay, Heather Hancock. Oh, Heather, could you please unmute? Heather, if you're able to unmute. Okay, we'll move on to Sabrina Hanlon. Sabrina, are you on mute? Okay.
I just unmuted. I'm sorry. I didn't realize I signed up twice. I thought I'd only signed up once, but that could have been a clerical error on my part. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sabrina. And one last shot for Heather Hancock? No. Okay, well, thank you, everybody who has participated in person. Oh, is Heather here? Okay. Heather, can you?
Hello?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Heather. Yep.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Heather.
Hello?
Heather, we can hear you. Go ahead and speak.
Okay, I'm so sorry. My phone was acting weird. Okay, sorry. So, hi, my name is Heather Hancock, and I'm a mother to a 13-year-old son, Jakai Dunbar, at Taft Middle School. My husband is active-duty military, and, well, our family is active-duty military. I've been trying to go forth with retaining my son due to his academic performance during the pandemic. My son is disabled. He does have an IEP, and it's been brought to my attention through the pandemic that he has been struggling. Due to the AB 104, I've been communicating with his school how I want to retain him because of his struggles, and I brought this to their attention and have communicated with them multiple times. My son ended the school year with eight Fs, four on his transcript, and due to him having an IEP, all teachers agreed, or not agreed, but all teachers documented that he was not able to accommodate any of his needs during the pandemic and that he was fidgety, not able to accommodate his IEP. He was very loud, distracted, confused. He had difficulties staying on task. His pediatrician reached out to me and also advised he needed to be retained. My son does see a therapist every Thursday as well, and he dropped to a reading score of third-grade reading level when he's in the seventh grade. His performance does show that he should be retained. Every subject because of an IEP is documented has shown that he's below average. I've been going back and forth with the district, including San Diego Unified, as well as Taft Middle School. I even went above and beyond and reached out to the AB 104 Senator, and she actually wrote me back. And she told me that I do have the right as a parent to retain my student, and I did forward this over to San Diego Unified, as well as the principal, and nobody is still budging with me. They are still fighting and stating I do not have these rights until 30 days into school, and I'm still fighting for my son. They're focusing on him having an IEP and not performing any changes and stating they'll focus on this once the school starts. I've expressed multiple times, due to the change of the AB 104, which is within our district, my son has been suffering, and I have attached the email from the Senator directly stating I have that right and it to be implemented as of right now. But yet, the principal keeps refusing, and this has been going on for months now and weeks. And she did offer a meeting, which is me and my husband about three weeks ago.
Okay, Ms. Hancock, thank you very much. We'll make sure that Superintendent Jackson does follow up on this issue, and we'll have communication with you and your family. Thanks so much. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and again, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. We are adjourned.